I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 5th, 2014 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the light of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got two presentations tonight. Ms. Hanson, you want to join me?
Well, actually, I just would like to invite Jean Alameda up here. As you know, Papillion Bay celebrated its 20th birthday this year, and because of their 20th birthday, we wanted to do a few things this year to celebrate that, and we had a birthday party at Papillion Bay, and then on the 20th of June, or July, July it was, we decided to do a give-back day. Since the city of Papillion's been so good to Papillion Bay, we wanted to do something to give back. So we invited people to come for a food donation, or a cash donation, to Papillion Bay and enjoy the day, and we were able to deliver 10 boxes of dry goods to the Heartland Family Services, to the Tri-City Food Bank, and Mayor Black has a check for you from Papillion Bay for that day-
Wow.
-to use towards the Tri-City Food Bank, so-
How much?
Five hundred dollars.
Did you want to say anything?
That'd be great.
We want to thank the city. The city has been one of our best supporters. We want to thank the community at large. Tri-City Food Pantry would not exist without the support of the community. We're a volunteer-run organization, and we serve the residents of Ralston, La Vista, and Papillion, and this will buy meat for a month, so God bless you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief, you want to join me? Candy and Rich, you guys want to come up? This is another one. I'm not sure which way to go. I'll start this way. Got a, probably a happy thing for them, and maybe a sad thing for us, I don't know. But I'll make a few comments, then have the chief and Rich. We've got a retirement. So Corporal Rich Borman was hired as a part-time Papillion police officer July 1st, 1975, and at that time, we had four full-time police officers. And then in 1982, Rich took the civil service exam and was officially hired as a full-time officer in July of 1982, and that brought us up to eight police officers in the department. March of 83, he had attended the Officer Certification Course in Grand Island and graduated eight weeks later. That's now a 16-week course. Rich was promoted to the rank of Corporal in September of 1988, supervising both the day and the night shift officers. Twice during his 39-year career, he served as an acting police chief, and worked out of four different police stations, and he was instrumental in planning in the redesign of the traditional black-and-white paint screen scheme that you now see on the cruisers. And he also was instrumental in the design and selection of the badges that the officers now wear. And after 39 years of service, Corporal Richard Borman officially retired on July 31st. Rich is joined tonight by his wife Candy, and she served a lot of years on the Papillion City Council with some of you, and retired last month after 31 years with SARP911. So we want to congratulate them both. Chief, do you want to come up?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm going to face this way.
Mayor, council members.
Now the rest of the story. I'd first like to just acknowledge a few folks besides his wife Candy. His daughter Stacy Gosh is here, Mike Borman in the back, and his wife Stephanie, I know. I don't know if you're, is your granddaughter here?
Grandson.
Oh, grandson, I'm sorry. So, and I know there are a couple other family members, and if you want to, you can introduce them when I come up, but it's nice to see you folks here. I'd also like to thank the fellow officers for taking time to be here. You all know and love and appreciate Richie as much as I do, so it's nice to see you here. In addition to what the mayor's already said, Rich was hired by Police Chief Fred Biesecker, who many of you may have met during your time, and this is how it went down. This is how things have changed. There was a place called the Old Derby Gas Station at 84th and Grant Streets, and Richie, I don't know if you were working there that day, or if you were just hanging out and causing trouble, but apparently Chief Biesecker pulled up in his vehicle and, in a rather rude way, asked Richie if he wanted a job. He said if he did, then to show up at our police station, or our police office at the time, in Terra Plaza the next day. So Richie, not knowing any better, he showed up the next day, and Chief Biesecker told him that we're going to go for a ride now, we're going to do a little training. So he drove Richie around town for two hours, told, then drove to his house, where Chief Biesecker got out of his car and went in his house and told Richie that he was now on patrol until 11 o'clock that night. So Richie performed his first patrol shift in blue jeans and his T-shirt, and without a gun, without any other stuff that you might think you might need, but he's seen a lot of things happen. Oh, by the way, I think during that time, when he took that fine position, I think the job paid somewhere about, what, two and a quarter an hour, something like that? Yeah. Well, also, in July of 1975, you might not know this, but the hit song at that time, top 10 song, was Jive Talkin' by the Bee Gees. So that should put you in a frame of mind of what timeframe we're talking about. When Richie then moved to full-time status in July of 1982, we had moved along as a police department by then. By then, I think we had two cruisers, one of which was a Plymouth Fury, and the other one was a Chevy Nova. In that particular month, E.T. became the highest-grossing film of all time, so Richie's been around. On a personal note, and I'm going to say the G-rated version here, I'll save the other one for Friday night, but I first met Richie in December of 1992, my first day on the job as a police officer when I came, and I wasn't to report to the academy until sometime in January, so they really had nothing to do for me. So that particular week, my first week, they flipped me the keys to a Public Works pickup truck, and told me to go ahead and move our police station from second-floor City Hall down to what is now Public Works. So me, the one man, one man in a truck, came up here to get my first load out of the second floor, and I walked into the police station, which is now the building inspections office. And I walk in there to grab the first chair, or desk, or whatever, I was supposed to haul down to the other place, and there sat Richie in the office. First guy I'd ever met, other than who had done my background investigation, and then the Chief of Police at the time, who had interviewed me. So I walked in, and let's just say that Richie was less than impressed with me showing up for my first day of work. I went away thinking that he was the most gruff, stubborn, mean SOB that I've ever met in my life. Now, as we all know, he may put on a gruff appearance, but Richie's anything but gruff. Like many others, as the mayor pointed out, when Richie used to supervise night shift and day shift, I worked for Richie on night shift. And I can remember one particular night, let's just say I had severe stomach issues, but back in that day, you didn't call in sick unless you had a replacement already in place, because what you ended up doing is screwing over your coworkers. A full night, a full complement of a shift might be two officers. So if you were to leave that one officer by himself, you were doing, you were doing the entire city, as well as that officer, a disservice. So I think that night, we might have had three on, and I was semi-rookie police officer, and I certainly didn't want to call in sick, or, so I was over utilizing the Public Works men's facilities, and realized that I needed Pepto-Bismol really, really bad. So I ran out, jumped in my cruiser, and I don't know if you remember the old Rockford files, how Jim Rockford used to whip around with his Firebird and do some reverse sort of thing? Well, I did that because I was in such a hurry to go buy Pepto-Bismol that I kind of forgot about the concrete pillar that was sitting there, and I ripped the entire front end off of my cruiser. So needless, I can remember the look on Richie's face that night when he looked at me, he said, "It sure stinks being you." Only he didn't use the word "stinks." You know, in 39 years of service, you can imagine how many, how many uncountable unpleasant situations that Rich had to deal with. You know, I hope he doesn't leave here remembering the unpleasant parts of our job. I just hope, Rich, that you remember the number of people that you helped over the years, because if there's anybody, it was kind of like the triad, you, Kathy Glassman, and Steve Young knew everybody in this town, everybody, everybody outside of this town. And I can tell you that that era is gone forever, just by virtue of our growth with business and all the residentials that we have. It's just impossible to have that, maintain that kind of relationship. But you had it, it was invaluable to the history of our police department, and I certainly appreciate it. I'd also like to remind everybody that the big bash occurs this Friday night down at the Belvedere, and not only Richie retired, but Candy retired last month after 31 with the 911 Center. Lloyd Glassman retired from the Sarpy County Sheriff's Office with, how many years? Forty. So between the three of them, it's well over 100-plus years of public safety experience. And they're all going to be honored on Friday, and probably roasted just a little bit, Rich. Probably won't be this kind of a version, but it's open, it's open to anybody that wishes to stop by, and I'm sure Richie would like to see a lot of your faces, so. We will be presenting, along with the mayor presenting tonight, Richie will be presented with some items from the city and from the Fraternal Order of Police on Friday at that event, so. One tradition, one last thing, one tradition in law enforcement is to present an officer when they retire with their badges, retired badges. And upon presentation of those badges, or receiving those badges, there's a certain amount of privileges that come with it that Richie will have and have for life. Richie will be able to come for annual qualification training, he'll be able to carry a weapon concealed without having to go through the permit process, as long as he remains in good standing as a retired officer. He'll be able to wear his uniform at ceremonial events, although I wouldn't bet on that. But regardless of what small privileges you get out of being able to carry that badge for the rest of your life, the biggest privilege that we'll have is you'll always be a part of our police family, so I just want to say congratulations. You know, one tradition is you pin, spouses often pin their badges on their husbands, or the other way around. It's great to see her pin on the retired badge.
Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and congratulations, Rich, well done. To begin my report this evening, council members, I hope by this time you've at least had some time to go through the draft of the budget that we submitted a couple of weeks ago, and take a look at that. If you haven't had time to look at the mayor's cover letter on that, I think it's important to point out a couple of key things in there, and, you know, history tells us a lot of things about the way things operate, and to me, it just, it's unique and noteworthy that the budget that you'll be introducing tonight, and we'll go through a public hearing in a couple of weeks, and hopefully approved in a month, is, actually represents a 25% reduction in the tax rate over a 25-year period in the city of Papillion. And that's certainly a credit, I know there's a couple of you, well, Steve's not here tonight, but have voted on almost every one of those budgets, and I think that gives a good long-term perspective of the policy-level decisions that you folks make each year, when you do consider how you use the people's money and tax money, and it's wisely, and we really have continued that focus on new development paying for itself. We just heard a brief history of how quickly we've all grown here, and that you have a tax rate that's 25% less than 1988. I think that's a job well done by the elected officials. Attendants remain to that. I attended a meeting this afternoon with our health, healthcare broker, and every year we go through this, negotiate healthcare increases, and I think we're at the final point, and we'll be looking at an 8% increase in our healthcare premiums. It's fairly substantial, it's about a $2.5 million line item. It started off at about 13%, and we've been negotiating with them the last couple of weeks during that process, but we did, just so you know the impact, had really, we had projected an 8% increase in the budget you'll be introducing, so we're right on spot with where we thought we would be, and so we don't make, need to make amendments unless you so choose to do that on the healthcare line item. To conclude my report, the seat, Mr. Mayor, by advising the council that the Civil Service Commission met this morning, they identified a process to go through the selection and the identification of the top three candidates for the next police chief. We did begin advertising that position Monday, yesterday. That will run through August 29th. The commission has a series of tests they'll be going through to qualify the top three candidates, and the target date for a name to Mayor Black is November 1st. Once the mayor gets the top three names, he then does a process of interviewing and background investigations and such, and then he will bring his selection to you. It looks like probably sometime in December, if we can stay on track with the commission, so that process is well on its way now, and has some substance, and is being advertised. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1696, an ordinance to amend the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill, which was adopted on January 7th, 2014 by Ordinance 1677, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Next is D2, Ordinance 1697, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, and to provide for an effective date. This is the budget for fiscal year 2014 to 2015. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilwoman Klug, thank you. D3, Ordinance 1698, an ordinance to amend in its entirety Chapter 146 of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with door-to-door sales, mobile vendors, and facility use and event permits, general provisions, definitions, door-to-door sales, mobile vendors, facility use and event permits, enforcement, violations, penalties, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Jaworski. Next is Item F1, Ordinance 1689, an ordinance to amend Chapter 92, Article 3, Section 15, Subsection A of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with the adoption of the National Fire Protection Association Life Safety Code 101, to amend Chapter 100, Section 5, Subsection J of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with unsafe buildings, and to provide for an effective date. This was tabled from the July 15th council meeting. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1689? Motion by Councilman Gaines?
Second.
Second by Councilman Florence. Any council discussion? Is there a motion to amend Ordinance 1689 to include the adoption of the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code? Motion by Councilman Jaworski?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug. Is there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on the amendment to Ordinance 1689.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
That passes. Now, please vote on the original motion as amended.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item F2, Resolution R14018, public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a Class I liquor license for DJs Neapolitan Pizza GRP of Nebraska, doing businesses Spin Neapolitan Pizza, 248 Olson Drive, Suite 113, and a manager application for Bryan Adams. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I breathe Brian's here. If you want to, you want to come up for a minute? Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name's Bryan Adams. I'm one of the owners and the manager, the operating manager for Spin Neapolitan Pizza in Papillion.
Now, since you're here, and Spin's a new concept in Nebraska, you want to share a little bit about it?
Sure, I can take a few minutes. You know, not your typical pizza place, that's for sure. Neapolitan-style pizza, and it's kind of new to Omaha, there's a few, one in West Omaha, kind of one in Dundee area. We found Spin, actually by accident, I could go through the long story, but I won't. At the end of the day, we just absolutely fell in love with the food, with the concept, you know, and at the end of the day, we're in business to make money, too, so we kind of like their financials as well, but such a different style pizza. One thing that any, a lot of bankers will tell you, is that there's two businesses right now in the food industry that are a pretty good investment. One of them is pizza, and the other one is sandwiches. For whatever reason, the people are buying a lot of sub sandwiches, you see them open up all over the place. So knowing that, and we've been in the restaurant business for goodness ever, our chief operating officer, Bryan Johnson, was a handshake franchisee, his father was a handshake franchisee 51 years ago with Colonel Sanders. So Colonel Sanders came up to his hometown, and his dad shook his hand, and they opened up six Colonel Sanders, and we've been in business ever since. I joined them about 13 years ago. So we said, "Where are we going to grow? What are we going to do?" And we decided on pizza. And when we found Spin, just fell in love with the concept. A Neapolitan-style pizza is quite a bit different than a traditional, you know, heavy cheese, heavy crust, lots of sauce, and pepperoni-style pizza. This is all about the flavors. They say less is more, because when you bite into it, you really get a taste that's different every time. Traditional Neapolitan's going to be in a stone oven. Our oven came in a couple weeks ago, already installed, and we're excited to fire that up for the first time. We're hoping to open up the 1st of October. But every, we have one cooking apparatus in the restaurant, and that's that oven. We cook everything in there. Everything comes in fresh daily. We buy all of our stuff locally, vegetables, the cheeses, it's all going to come from the surrounding area. We cook it off every morning, we make the pizzas when you order. Totally different concept than what you're used to as well. You're kind of, most people will shoehorn you either into a fast-food category, where you order at the counter, and they bring the food out, and you take off, or a full-service type restaurant, where you come in, sit down, have a waitress, waiter, come out, take your order, and move on. What this is, is the biggest hybrid that we've yet to find, and that is, you come in, you will place your order at a cashier, at that, from that point, and that point on, it's all full-service. The waitress will come out to you, she'll bring your drinks to you, bring your silver and your plates out, she'll bring out your drink orders, if approved, you'll have beer and wine options, bring out your pizza, your salads, your pizza, over 29 different pizzas that are already positioned for you to order, but you can order any type of pizza that you would like. And then six different salads, you can have different combinations. Someone asked me, "How many times do I have to come in before I end up eating the same thing I ate before?" I think it's over 124 different combinations of pizzas and salads and sandwiches that you can put together, that will just tickle your tongue with flavors and different profiles, and some traditional, like there's going to be a pepperoni pizza, and there's going to be a trice carne, which is a three-meat pizza, because that's what people like when they think of pizza. But then on the other end, from an eggplant pizza, to one of my favorites, which is a salsa con mela, which is a sausage and apple pizza, that's just decadent, become one of my favorites. So that's kind of Spin Pizza in a nutshell. You know, we're excited, we want to carry beer and wine, and that's it. It's not, again, not a nightclub, so we're not going to be open till 2:00 in the morning, serving alcohol and pouring Jack and Cokes and all kinds of stuff like that. It's just beer and wine, and the beers are pretty much craft beers, eight taps, all craft, local craft beers, some from other areas as well, and then 20 bottles of wine on display all the time, from 20 different bins, if you will, or styles of wine, of which three are uncorked every day, you can get by the glass, otherwise it's, you know, somewhere 20, $25 a bottle, and you can enjoy a glass of wine that way. So, you know, in a nutshell, that's us, and that's Spin Pizza, and we're excited to come to Papillion. Just one last thing, I'll tell you, I'll tell you me, right? So I was born and raised in La Vista, graduated as a monarch, and my daughter just graduated as, and that was 40, I was born 48 years ago, I guess. My daughter just graduated with honors from Papio South, and is, and we're taking her to New York to go to college next week, so we're pretty excited about that as well. And I'm also excited that we got delayed a couple weeks. We're hoping to open October 1st, but that allows me to take her out to Brooklyn into her art school that she's going to, so I'm excited about that as well.
Well, we're excited about this for a couple of reasons. One, Midlands Place is an important corner on 84th and 370, and that whole 370 corridor, and that's where you're going, so thank you for that. We love small business and local people, opening local businesses, and you fit that story, but we've also got, you'll probably be about the fourth or fifth concept that is expanding regionally or nationally, and comes to Nebraska through Papillion, so you're joining a good crowd, and they've all been successful, so thank you for that. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14018?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Item F3, Resolution R14019, a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve a catering liquor license for Twisted Vine LLC, doing businesses Twisted Vine, 123 North Washington Street. This is a public hearing, and I believe Bill, the applicant, is here. Do we have any proponents? Bill, you want to come up just real quick and share what you're doing? Because I think that question might have actually come up at the last council meeting.
Certainly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Bill Aegartner with Twisted Vine. I'm suddenly in the mood for pizza, but I don't know. For this evening with a catering license, we just recently had our first sip-and-walk event in downtown Papillion, which Kim's up here joining me to kind of talk about that a little bit, and the success that we had with that event. But in order to keep doing that, Twisted Vine has decided to apply for the catering license, to make sure that we can keep these events going in downtown Papillion, and create more opportunity and more camaraderie in the area.
Very good. Do we have any other proponents? Kim, as long as you're here.
Kim Ailer is president of the Downtown Business Association. Our first sip-and-walk was a huge success. We have never received so many positive feedbacks from not just community members, people attending the event, but business owners. We heard from Mary Beth Harold, Papillion Flower Patch, has been in business, we all know, for 35 years, plus years. She has never had that many people come in her shop in one night and say, "I've never been in here before, this is beautiful." All those years, and it took just having an event like this to create all these new first-time business customers for her. We had a couple from Storm Lake, Iowa. They make it a point every Thursday night, after they get off work in Omaha, to go on a different date night, anywhere. They've never been to Papillion, they heard about the event, decided, "We're going to spend our Thursday night here in Papillion." They had a phenomenal night, they said they will be back. So we're very excited, we had almost 200 attendees at the last, and our next one's coming up here in August 21st, and we're very excited, we have a great response of people wanting to come again, so thank you.
Thank you both very much for what you're doing, and great partnership. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14019? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Florence. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes, thank you. Next, F4, Resolution R14015, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to a Real Estate Lease Agreement with Drywall Supply, Inc., for the lease of property located at 305 to 307 East Lincoln. The city is the applicant. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R14015?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Next is committee reports, but I don't think any committees have met in the last two weeks. Do we have any comments from the floor? No comments from the floor? Any council comments? Just a few things from the last couple of weeks. We had another ribbon-cutting downtown. I think we've had more, I think I've said this before, we've had more ribbon cuttings in downtown Papillion than I think we've had in all of Sarpy County. A2O Contracting has opened up in the basement of Bell Hall, and I believe that landlord has also signed another lease, and Bell Hall will now be fully leased out. That next ribbon-cutting should be in about a month. Mr. Hoynes and I met with Brittany Farren from Moore &amp; Associates, along with, and then we also had a meeting with Officer Golley and Officer Peyton, representing the F- and then we also had a meeting with Officer Golley and Officer Payton, representing the FOP in regards to the chief selection process. Also, Mr. Hoynes and myself also met with Ms. Clark, library director, in regards to library services outside of city limits. How do we service the ETJ and is there a way to serve county residents in cooperation with some other libraries? Also attended the Cooperation Best kickoff event for the school district and was a guest speaker at MOBA, the Metro Omaha Builders Association luncheon. They had about 120 folks from that industry and I went and gave an update on Papillion, the development that's going on, what we're doing with the fire marshal, the 1100 houses we have in the plating process, and talked a little bit about the school boundary issue that we all are aware of that's inhibiting some of our development, and enlisted their help a little bit there. Mr. Hoynes and I also attended the United Cities Meeting in Gretna yesterday. Some of the discussion was just preparing for the upcoming legislative session. So if you've got things that are of legislative interest, now would be the time to be bringing those up so we can be working those. And also, Mr. Hoynes did it last week and I did it today, we went out and spoke to the mayor's youth council leadership at the 4H Center down at Shram Park. They're having an event to get ready for the next school year. I don't believe there is any other major updates. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the Papio Bay 20th Anniversary Celebration. Got some great publicity on that, really a great thing. Lori, you put together a very wonderful celebration. I've had several people this summer comment to me about how much they like Papio Bay and what a big part that facility is of the quality of life and the perception people have over Papillion. And because of those comments and the celebration, it caused me to think back that the, I believe the first contact that I ever had with the Papillion City Council was when I came to a council meeting about 23 years ago and suggested that Papio Bay was being put in the wrong place, that I had, I preferred someplace else. Well, the city council didn't listen to me, they put it in a very good place. And so after 20 years, 20-some years, I want to announce that I was wrong. They were right, and as the celebration went on, I thought, "I must eat crow." The city council 20-some years ago made the right decision by ignoring Tom Mumgarth. I hope it never happens again. Thank you for my time.
Appreciate that. Just a couple of reminders, August 11th at 3:00 PM is the groundbreaking for the Public Works Building, so put that on your calendar. August 16th is the Criteerium. If you're not familiar with it, the only way I describe it is it's like NASCAR on an Indy track on a bicycle in downtown Papillion. I think you've gotta come see it to experience it. As the day gets later, the level of skill goes up and actually have professional-level races at the end of the day. And I think three years ago, we actually had somebody come in from New Zealand, I believe, for the race, or they were leaving here to go to New Zealand, one way or the other. But I believe for the professionals, this is actually a qualifying race for upper levels. So it is a very unique thing to experience, and as long as you're down here, go to some of the downtown businesses as you're wandering around. Yeah, and Mark Sturzma is the race director, so put that on your calendar, August 16th. And then September 27th, there's gonna be another downtown event, the Downtown Business Association is doing another event. They've really taken off this year, and again, can't thank you guys enough for what you're doing for downtown, appreciate it. So put September 27th on your calendar as well for a unique event downtown. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Missed it. Motion by Councilman Glover. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Florence, please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned.